And then one second. Okay, we are now streaming live.
Thank you. Pursuant to recently adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act included in Public Act 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. Governor Prisker's Executive Order 2021-32 has extended this provision through January 8th, 2021. As village president, I have made the determination that it is not practical nor prudent to meet in person at this time. Accordingly, this meeting of the Committee of the Whole is being conducted virtually with members of the board and staff participating through this Zoom webinar platform. Village Manager Philip Corrali is in the Village Hall Council Chambers in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. It's the first order of business, I'd request that Village Manager call the roll.
Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Yeah.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Underdonk.
Here.
Trustee Ruben.
Here.
Trustee Vry.
Here.
And I'm. As noted, today's board meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software, and is being audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. As required by law, I'll ask for a roll call rather than voice votes on any agenda item requiring a vote. The second item is public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rule the Board approved on April 16th, 2020, here's how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I'd ask that Jordan Rigalski read the public comments received and non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting. Public comments on agenda items, if any, will be read when we reach that item on the agenda. Specifically, any comments to either meeting will be read during those respective public hearings. And with that, Jordan could read public comments, if any, on non-agenda items.
President Rowan, we did not receive any for this meeting tonight.
Thank you. If a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencoeeting@villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to 400 words. That takes care of item two. Item three is discussion of proposed driving range upgrades and associated ordinance amendment. And I would ask that Development Services Manager Taylor Baxter and Golf Club Manager Stella Nanos present with respect to this point.
Thank you. I'm actually going to start the presentation.
Thank you.
Following our presentation on the calendar 22 budget for the Community Investment Program, where we were proposing range enhancements to the existing driving range. We are now presenting tonight a little bit of an idea of what that enhancement would look like. And then Taylor is going to go into what would be needed in order for that enhancement to go forward. We have discussed before that the driving range is a limited-use driving range at this point. Drivers and woods of any type are prohibited to try to eliminate safety conditions that would be detrimental to our neighbors. Right now, we have had some safety issues with balls exiting the range despite many modifications that have been taking place and the restrictions to irons only. We are proposing to do these improvements that would include protective netting that is appropriate for the height of the availability of drivers and wood. So, and the rendering that is being shown right now. We would also include birmingham along Wesley Road to help kind of camouflage the poles and the protective netting that would be necessary. What you're seeing right now are some of the existing trees that are adjacent to Wesley Road and some new plantings that would also be put in place. The trees on the side of Wesley Road are the actual height of the trees that are existing right now. And the shorter ones would be the plantings that are going to be put in place. The first rendering showed a little bit more of the birmingham. You could see it a little bit better on this. So there would be birmingham adjacent to the poles. We're also proposing putting in a walkway along Wesley Road on the other side of the poles, obviously, to allow for pedestrian right-of-way down Wesley Road, which currently doesn't exist. And this is an aerial shot of the area. There are three homes that face the driving range. The one in the upper or the lower right corner, that house faces Wesley Road. So that does not even come into play in the far of aesthetically, you know, unpleasing for the netting. So there are three homes that would be facing the driving range itself. And that fourth home is more facing towards Wesley Road. This work has been done by a golf course architect. And the enhancements would be done mostly by our staff to help reduce costs. And this is slated for work next year if the ordinance goes through. So at this point, if there's any questions on the renderings, I'll answer them. Otherwise, I will turn it over to Taylor for what would be needed in order to pursue this enhancement to the driving range.
Thank you for that clear presentation. Any of the board members have questions? Because you can certainly ask them now, or we could wait till we've gotten both presentations.
This is Pete. Quick question about the sand traps and looks like the greens. Are those new additions too?
Some of the, those are target grains. Some of them are already existing out there and it's natural surface. It's not artificial.
Thank you.
Sure.
Question?
Yes.
Dudley.
Question? Yes. The poles themselves, are they on the inside of the tree line, in the middle of the tree line, or closer to the street? I can't really tell from.
The poles are on the inside of the larger existing trees right now.
Okay.
And then we would be planting trees, additional trees on both sides of the netting.
Okay, really good. The pathway that we're looking at, maybe it'd be good exploring of funding for that. I bet we could use MFT resources to pay for that. Something to look into.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to ask questions before we go into Taylor's presentation? Taylor, take it away.
President Rowan. So in order for this project to move forward, there would be some ordinance amendments that would be needed. Currently, this would be regulated as a fence under the Fence Code, which is actually part of the Building Code, not part of the zoning code. Fences are limited to between four and six feet in height, depending on their location. So that would clearly not allow for something of this scale. However, there is an exception in the Fence Code. Any lot located within 750 feet of a golf course may install a temporary fence made of netting or similar materials. This is at the discretion of the Village Manager. So this would apply to the golf course and properties across the street, which would be allowed under this at the discretion of the Village Manager to install a fence of whatever height is appropriate there on their own property as well to protect their property from golf ball. So this would apply both to, as written now, to the golf course and the properties across the street. However, the key here is that this only allows temporary fencing. So the questions that we would need to discuss and address are whether the code should be amended to allow golf courses to install permanent protective netting that exceeds current fence height limits, which is again between four and six feet. Again, this is currently only allowed as temporary fencing. And whether the code should be amended to allow properties near golf courses. This case, within 750 feet, as currently written, to install permanent protective netting, or whether this netting should continue to be allowed only in a temporary capacity. I'd also mention that, again, this is in the Building Code. So if the Board did decide that we wanted to move forward with these amendments, it may be an amendment to the Building Code, so it wouldn't go to the Zoning Commission. This would be before the Village Board to make this decision. And that'll turn it back over to President Rowan.
So Taylor, let me ask you a question. We learned at the zoning board a couple of years ago that there's a, the fences are limited to four to six feet in height. And the zoning board is allowed to issue variances. And it turns out there's no limit on what can be allowed as a variance. Could, under the, under the existing codes, could the zoning board issue a variance for a golf course fence that's really tall?
I believe, I'd want to look at that section of code in detail. I believe the answer to that is yes. The Fence Board of Appeals could issue a variance.
Yes, right, right.
There are specific criteria in the Fence Code. The Defense Board is responsible for following. I don't want to look at those in detail, and I don't want to comment on whether this would be those or not. This, the provision that we're mentioning here, which we would likely want to amend if we want to move forward with this, would allow the Village Manager to allow a higher fence without necessarily looking at those criteria. There are other criteria that are in this section, which I didn't put in this presentation, but the Village Manager has criteria in that section to look at, which are height, materials, location, and impact on neighboring properties. So it's a different set of criteria.
Okay, I'm not advocating what seems to me sort of a, it's, it would be, you know, kind of ad hoc, and I'm in favor of full disclosure, but it just, okay, but this is helpful. There are a number of options that we could adapt in order to allow this particular, in order to allow the proposal that our golf course is recommending. And we'll have to pick one if we're going to do it. Okay. If that's it, just now that we've heard from both Taylor and Stella, anybody else want to ask questions about the presentation as to how we might go about doing this, if we're going to do it?
Question? This is Bedley. Question? Has the neighbors been consulted on this at this point at all?
We have not brought it to the neighbors yet. That would be our next step.
Okay.
Stella, just have, has this previously been brought? I mean, I thought this is something.
It has, it has been, it has previously been brought to the neighbors over 10 years ago. The same neighbors are still here. There has not been any change in any of the residents that are adjacent to the driving range at this point.
Trustee Underdonk to add to what Stella's already said. I think if the Board has an inclination and direct staff to begin the process of updating and bringing forward an ordinance modification, I think before we would bring that back to you all at a subsequent Village Board meeting, we would be outreach to the neighbors to talk to them about the plan and about the impact, what it would look like, and particularly what it would look like to them. But that certainly would be our intention is to do that outreach before this comes back to you all.
Thank you.
And what would be, oh, I was just wondering what would be the height of these poles in relation also to a regular light pole?
The, we're waiting for a golf ball trajectory study that would give us the exact height that's necessary, but it would be probably a minimum of 85 feet. The rendering that you're looking at right now, the existing tree on the right-hand side is a 50-foot tree that's in place already. So that could show you how much higher the netting would be over the tree height. But that is what probably would be the height at this point.
Hello, real quick on that. I seem to recall you saying that part of the design is that it goes up and then it comes back down in terms of the overall height of those nets. Do we, are we still waiting? Is that another component of what we're waiting for?
Correct. So at the highest, at the highest point, it would be 85 feet.
Yeah, you said at minimum 85. So I just wanted to clarify it. Probably is maximum 85 and then stepping down on either side.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to ask a question or make a comment?
Hi, this is Pete.
Go ahead.
I was wondering if we could get a little description of the business case and payback periods or just that. Revenues generated from this change. I assume there's a, that's one of the primary drivers.
The revenue would definitely be increased. Depending on how many hitting stations, we may be able to get additional hitting stations on the driving range as well. As far as the return, we are awaiting some bids that are coming in probably higher as everyone could expect than what is normal or within the last, you know, three years or so. So I couldn't give you an answer on what the return would be until I got a definitive answer on the hiding of the nets. So I'm trying to do everything in order because that golf ball trajectory study does cost about $5,000. So until we get approved, I wouldn't go through with that. And I also wouldn't be able to give you a definitive cost of the project until I knew how high the netting would have to be. But as the price increases, obviously, the return is going to take longer than expected. The driving range, it's a proponent of it to definitely make more money, of course. It's definitely an enhancement to the overall experience at the driving range. And the safety is really paramount because it's hard to control every person out there and make sure that they are abiding by our rules. And the last thing we want is to have anybody's safety, you know, in a bad situation, especially along the driving range there with a lot of pedestrians as well.
Thank you.
Stella, with just a follow-up, Gary, did the amount tentatively budgeted in the community reinvestment plan was increased materially because of expected rising costs to do this? Do you anticipate that that number that's in there now will not cover the improvement?
I do suspect that the number has increased higher since, yes.
Yeah, trusty.
It's a multiple of where we started.
I think one of the, one of the questions that we still need to answer is a timing question overall. And while I think it's important that we, we get those numbers back to get a sense of what they might be in January of 2022, those numbers may come back to at a level where we say, you know what? We're going to hold off on this project a bit until the unusual nature of the current market settles down. And I think that's a, that's a question that we have some suspicion is going to be answered with a, the number is higher than we want it to be. That's, that's what we're going to ascertain before we would bring a contract to do the project back to the, back to the Board. Because if, if the number is too significantly different, it alters that ROI analysis that Stella referenced and Trustee Mulvaney asked about too. You know, there's, we're entering into just odd times with the procurement of certain componentry for a project like this. And it may be better to hold off on it rather than overpay for it.
Hey, this is Pete. I have the last comment too, and that's about the timing of the bid. It sounds like we already have put out an RFP for this.
No.
No, we have not.
No, no, I have several netting companies that we've reached out to asking, you know, what would it cost, you know, if it was 85 feet? You know, just give me an idea. Give me an example of other driving ranges that you've done this at. Show me how much their projects have cost. Things of that nature. We have not put together or received any official bids because I don't know what the height would have to be. So it's just based on projects that have been completed in the last six months and just doing a guesstimate on an 85-foot net.
Okay, thank you.
So I think at this point, we need to start. And, and so what I would recommend is that we authorize staff to start. We don't have all the answers. I mean, and, and I don't know where we're going to end up. And it's possible we're going to get pushback from neighbors, and we always carefully consider that. But it seems to me that we should authorize staff to start. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I'd agree.
I'd agree because sooner or later, I think we're going to do this. We may wait to see if supply chain impediments can be mitigated by waiting. But I don't think that would change the study that we need to have. I mean, that's, that's more about what physics. And that's not going to change in the next couple, you know, this year, next year, whatever year we wind up doing it. So let's go ahead and get the study done and then, and then that'll help us price it and figure out if we should wait or not.
Yeah, that seems right. So do we need to make any formal, you know, motions? Or is this good enough to get started?
I don't think you need to do anything formal such as that, President Rowan. I think what we wanted to make sure we advised the Board of tonight is generally, you know, what we may have to undertake. And I think we got the direction that we need, and we're going to do some additional work. Stella is going to get some additional information. We're going to do some outreach to the neighbors, and we will come back to you at a subsequent Committee of the Whole to discuss all of that again.
That seems great. And for, and just for the public, we're starting that there's no predetermined answer here. If, as Trustee Mulvaney pointed out, if somehow the costs are so high that it is an economic loser, we'll think differently. If somehow it can't be done reasonably, we'll think differently. We're going to, and we will certainly take into consideration concerns of neighbors, although, you know, the golf course has been here for a long time. Okay, that's, that's great. I think we've covered that item on the agenda. Thank you, Taylor and Stella, for your excellent presentations.
Thank you.
Fourth item is discussion of potential updates to permit extension fees. And Taylor, you're back. Taylor Baxter, can you tell us what this is about?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Rowan. So this discussion is about potential updates to how we handle permit extension fees. The background on this is we have a small number of building projects that have been receiving multiple permit extensions. And at this, again, small number of sites, these building projects are occasionally taking years to complete, which are causing ongoing nuisance issues for neighbors. So we've heard from some residents about this, and there have been requests to examine what we are doing to encourage these really long-term projects to finish in a more timely manner. So our current system is after a building permit is issued, there is a 15-month window to close the permit out. After that 15-month window, an applicant or builder can get a six-month extension for a 33% cost, 33% of the original permit fees. There's no limit to the number of extensions. If the builder finishes before the end of the six-month window of the extension, they can get a prorated refund, which discourages them from taking up the entire six months after they get that extension. Most new homes are finished within 15 months. It's really a small number of houses that get any extension whatsoever. And on top of that, very few projects receive multiple extensions. But when they get multiple extensions, they can take years to complete. And again, this really causes, has caused a lot of ongoing issues for people who live nearby. Since 2020, we've had three projects that have received multiple extensions. First is 57 Maple Hill, got three extensions. And then there was two and three that are actually neighboring properties on Lakeside, which between them gotten eight extensions, and those projects are both still in progress. So there may be more extensions potentially on top of the eight that have already been granted on those neighboring properties. So again, it's, out of all the building projects we have, it is a very small number. But those small numbers can take a long time and cause significant problems to neighbors. We looked into what some neighboring communities are doing. There's ours at the top there, 15 months, again, 33% permit fee for a six-month extension. On the right there, we've got it broken out by the percentage of the original permit fees on a per month basis, because some of these are, the extensions are different time periods. When that cut on a per month basis is the same as ours, they just issue a 15, excuse me, a 50% permit fee for a nine-month extension. Again, they have a 15-month permit window, just as we do. Well, that's a bit stricter. They have a shorter initial permit length, only 12 months. And then they do a monthly extension, which works out to about 8.3% of the original permit fees per month. Kynna Worth handles things a bit differently. They have a longer initial permit, permit length. They have slightly less expensive extension fees, but they do only grant extensions at the discretion of the Village Manager. And talking to staff in Kynna Worth, they told me that this is not necessarily always granted. They do take a look at it, and it is a discretionary extension. Northfield does not charge a fee. They have an 18-month initial permit length, no fee for extensions. One, the initial extension is discretionary by staff. After that, any additional extension has to go to their zoning board of appeals. So they have a very different structure than we do with some discretionary steps in there by different people. So there are a number of options. A number of options for how to proceed here. One would be potentially an escalating fee schedule, which would penalize these really long-term projects that are taking years. Right now, it's 33% for six months. That fee never goes up. These are just, you know, one possible way of looking at this. These numbers could be adjusted. The time periods could be adjusted based on what, what the Board feels is appropriate. For example, a second extension could double the fees, and then all subsequent extensions could, again, escalate to potentially 100%. These numbers are subject to change. And then this chart at the bottom is just an example of how I'm using this escalating fees, how these ongoing, these recent projects that have gotten multiple fees, multiple extensions, their fees would change. The bottom two lines there, again, these are in-progress projects. So, you know, they've both gotten two extensions. The next time they got an extension, their permit fees would go up to 200% would be the total, the total that they would pay. So this is one potential way of really discouraging ongoing years-long processes. So what we're asking from the Board tonight is some feedback about potential strategies for encouraging more timely completion of these, the small number of long-term building projects, potentially including escalating fee schedules or some other strategies. And that'll turn it back over to President Rowan.
And Taylor, if I could just add something, President Rowan, I'm sorry. I just wanted to add one thing to what Taylor mentioned. We had no permit. We had no, uh, permit, uh, there was, there was, until about, uh, twenty-eighteen, the village had no cost for those extensions. So that thirty-three percent, um, permit fee for the six-month extensions is relatively new for us. Um, and that was the product, that additional change was the product of a, of an extensive study that we undertook in twenty-seventeen, uh, that led to the new, um, building permit fee structure that we have today. So, um, the, the modification is, uh, I think appropriate for us to have a conversation about and, but I just wanted to give you that bit of additional context.
Um, thank you. Let, let me ask you, so just looking at what other, uh, municipalities you're doing, it, it seems like denying a request for extension is not, you know, it's like biting your nose to spite your face because, so there's a hole in the ground and they've done something and maybe they've done a lot, maybe they've done a little. But if we deny an extension, they have to stop. We don't want that. I mean, we don't want that. The neighbors don't want that. So it seems to me that's not, uh, useful uh, way to get at the problem, which is, um, we're, we're torturing the neighbors with an ongoing construction project. And I have to say, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, something that will deter, um, somebody that wants to take forever to do their project, whether it's, and you know, I would, this could be the contractors because you, we know contractors, um, are often juggling a lot of projects. And I guess in some cases it might be the owners, but I think we want to do what we can to deter that kind of behavior. Um, and I'm in favor of, uh, you know, escalating fees. What's the, what is the, the magnitude of the, uh, the fee in the first place? What are we talking about in terms of dollars? Taylor, you probably know that.
I mean, it's, it, it, it's three-point-five percent. Uh, I mean, I, I would say for a project like these ones that we're talking about now, um, a thirty-three percent fee would be fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. That's, I'd have to look up the exact amount. Uh, but that'd be my guess and off the top of my head, uh, maybe, maybe a bit more. Um, in that, in that twenty, twenty thousand range.
Yeah.
So we're talking, we're, we're talking real money for many people and including contractors. I, I, I think we should, uh, be considering that and is there a, um, is there a circumstance in which this could be waived for, God forbid hardship? Like, you know, we thought it took a long time, but we, we got it. We understood what happened, like say, say a global pandemic.
It, it could be. Yes, that's, that is potentially something we could, we can put into this policy.
So with that, I just think we should do it. I, I think it's, I wouldn't, I would not want to be living next to the unending construction project. I mean, everybody knows that life is going to be bad during the project. It's got to get over with.
I, I think, I, I think having some amount of discretion in there for, um, revoking permits is worth doing. Um, I don't think you want to leave a hole in the ground and that's where the discretion, the discretionary piece comes in. Um, but if, I mean, one of the examples that was given was somebody continuously changes their mind about something. Uh, and there comes a point where, you know, for some people, now fifteen thousand is real money and, you know, but in some cases that may not be. Uh, and so I think they're, they're, to have some discretion in there to revoke permits in addition to the escalating, um, permits, the, the, the fees associated with those permits, I, I'm in favor of, um, three years to do a, a, a project's ridiculous, uh, and I don't know what they're doing, but, um, you know, I, I'd be in favor of revoked, revoking permits in that case.
Taylor, what happens if, I mean, could we say, um, revoke and restore? Turned it into a lot again, or, I mean, what happens?
If, if a permit was revoked?
Yeah.
And that's, that's a good question. Um, and we, I might want to turn to, 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 I'm, I'm not sure if Stu or Steve is here and maybe help me out with it, but if, if a project is half-built, if a, if a permit is revoked, we'd make them reapply for a building permit and get re-review and start the process over. Um, I mean, typically we would want the, the lot returned to a, you know, a park-like setting and restored. I'm not sure what the, i- if, if a house is half-built, I'm not sure how feasible or anything like that would be. Um, I think most likely you would end up with a half-built structure there for a considerable amount of time while they went through a reapplication process. Um, and you know, the reapplication process would just add more time to it. Um, whereas, you know, an escalating fee structure, you might be able to capture at the benefit of a, of a reapplication, revoking in a reapplication process is you would get the full fees again. Um, whereas an escalating fee structure potentially you could get the full fees again without going through that revocation and reapplication of delay process. Um, so there may be some.
One thought I had that may address what I think trustee Bree is noting, which is kind of the perpetual nature of some of these construction projects is perhaps we build into the modification of the, uh, the code provision that would give us, um, certain parameters by which we would cease further extensions. Lack of work on the site, um, lack of progress so that you, you don't just extend. You have got another six months and another six months, but nothing's really happening during that time and they have an active permit. I, I don't think we probably want to go down the path of, uh, unless in certain circumstances we might, where we might want to revoke fully a permit. It may be simply, we're not going to provide a further, uh, ex- extension past this six-month window. Um, we, we could look at some different alternatives and bring some of those things back to you all. Stu, I don't know, I, I didn't want to step on your toe. You look like you were going to make mention of something as well.
Oh, Taylor and I discussed this when we were preparing for this meeting and, you know, when you talk about restoration, you start getting a lot closer to what we do with commercial developments where you, you have like a large commercial property that's going to have significant public improvements and you require, you know, a, a sufficient enough letter of credit or subdivision bond basically to return, uh, the property to, in the language we always use in our development agreements, as a park-like setting. The issue is that that's really unusual and kind of most people would say overkill for a residential property. And then once again, to kind of do a fiddler on the roof tevia, on the other hand, um, some of the houses that are built in Glencoe are actually bigger than some commercial properties. Um, and so, you know, finding the amount of security for a residential, um, for residential project is, um, you, you don't want to dissuade and you don't want to put an unreasonable burden on residential construction. But at the same time, um, for some of these projects that are very large in scale, you know, we could talk about that. Um, Taylor, do we, do we, we collect like a site, a restoration deposit if there's work being done on the public right-of-way, correct?
I believe we do, yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's typical. If there's any work that's being done on the public right-of-way, we have a restoration deposit to ensure that the village's property itself is being restored. But going into private property with, you know, village contractors and restoring, that's a, that's a pretty big step from a legal perspective.
Thank you. Um, see, I've looked, uh, trustee, trustee Bree has made a good point. Um, although we, you know, we don't know what happens if we try to use this power. I'm not, I think we should be thinking about retaining all kinds of options in the event we have one of these ongoing disasters. Um, I mean, for example, I could imagine, okay, when you get a building permit, you're fine, but if you're going in for an extension, maybe we do talk about putting up some kind of a letter of credit. Um, I mean, so it, I, I think we should, I, it sounds like there's sort of agreement that, uh, we want to protect our residents from this kind of thing. And an escalating, uh, schedule, um, is one way. And retaining the ability to revoke is another. And possibly protecting us if there's a revocation with a way for that to get paid for, to get it fixed is another. Um, and I wouldn't want to, and I'd want to have some discretion on when to apply these things. Uh, and we should start writing it up because it's, it's just, it's just sort of not acceptable now. And until we have a, a statutory protection, our residents are going to get steamrolled.
That sounds very similar to a subdivision improvement guarantee, you know, bonding, uh, something like that. Um, I think it'd be great if staff were able to come up with some alternatives for us and then we talk about it in another meeting.
Anybody else? I mean.
Yes, sure. I have a couple thoughts, probably somewhat counter, but other ways to shorten the duration of a construction period is to allow a longer workday. Uh, so we may want to consider if the overall length of time is what's important, we may want to, uh, think about the various incentives uh, for longer or shorter days. The other thing I'm wondering is, uh, does it make sense to create different classes of construction permits? Uh, if a builder is going in knowing this is a two or a three-year project, um, would it make sense to think about that right up front? Allow that kind of a permit, but put in different types of controls. The more stringent noise abatement, more stringent site cleanliness, et cetera, um, to make the, the longer duration less painful.
Having had a ton of construction on my street, I'd be totally opposed to lengthening the workday. Um, it's noisy, so earlier and later.
Same here, having houses on both sides of me and across the street in these last few years. It's been constant and you can absolute, you don't have to look at your watch to know when seven AM rolls through.
I, I think the issue we're dealing with here is not the inability of these contractors to get the jobs done in a timely manner, but all of the other reasons that they're not constantly working on a daily basis. And it's the lack of progress that I think is what we're trying to, um, overcome to get, you know, you can build a high-rise building in less time than these houses are taking to, um, complete their construction. And that, that's what we need to be, um, incentivizing them to.
Famously, the Empire State Building was built in a year in the depression. Um, yes, uh, okay, well, I, I mean, there are, it seems like there are a lot of good ideas and I think in general, uh, we want to pursue them in order to, um, make, you know, it's possible some of this is driven by the owner, but my, my suspicion isn't so often driven by the contractor who has lots of jobs and is going to go uh, where the, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. And I think what we're saying to staff is, okay, we're, we want to get squeaky here. So they finish here. So let's, uh, and we have a bunch of good ideas, um, and,
Yep.
uh, and, and, and I'm okay with the discretion. Um, so let's.
We will, we will take all of this information and, um, look at the various different alternatives that we may have, uh, at our disposal and bring something back to you for discussion.
That, that's great. And Taylor, uh, thank you for a clear, uh, presentation and the investigation that went into it first. Uh, very helpful. Okay, so that's item four. Uh, item five is other business. Are, is there any other business that any member of the board would like to discuss? I don't see anybody. So what that means is, uh, village manager Crowley, do, do you think we have enough time to try to do our closed session?
I, I do, although I, I need to, there's a process that I'm going to have to do, uh, for us to get into closed session and that is I need to get on the phone with Steve Elrod, who's traveling between meetings right now, um, to get that closed session started. Um, if this board would like to go into closed session, I do believe we could complete our discussion um, while in advance of our seven-eight or seven PM board meeting start.
So I'm, I'm in favor of that. I, of course, will have to hunt for the link for the closed session.
Steve sent it to me.
I, right, I, I know it's in there somewhere.
So I'm, I'm, I'm reaching out to Steve right now, Phil.
You are. Thank you, Stu. You win the prize.
So, so we're going to try to do it. Um, I will, I'll, uh, Phil, I'll call you desperately if somehow I can't find it. But I think what we should do then is have, to have a motion to, um, move into closed session uh, to discuss, um, two C-two, two C-eleven and two C-one items.
And I'm, I'll make, can I just recommend one change to that, President Rowan? I think it's really two C-two and two C-eleven collective bargaining and pending litigation.
Okay, okay, that's great.
Phil moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Oh, there is a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney?
Well.
Trustee Underdunk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Bree?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, uh, see ya.
And just a reminder, everyone can leave this one and go to the other.
Okay.
Well, Chris Light, they, they required a letter of credit for tree replacements on, on long. And I always fought against that. My old person had a double. Because I said, this is a dumb idea. I said. I always said, no. If somebody doesn't plant the tree. Are we gonna, are we gonna treat whatever?
We keep it a lot of time. We just get a, 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 a deposit. Like, or go into a deposit fund and then they can keep you. You've had that explained here, right?
Why?
If, if you're. And if you, if you replace the caliper actions, you can get, you can get the refund based on the number.
I say eight year. I'm like. He does that and it's. I was like, that was long and I. But, and it's like. Oh. I am not. I better be.
Testing, testing. Jordan, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay. Testing the view. How does that look, Jordan?
It looks good. Yeah. And you can, if you're talking your normal, in your normal tone, it sounds good as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Of course.
Can you turn the camera around?
I'll give it a shot with my computer here. I can see there's everybody. Hello.
All right. Great.
So you'll be able to see them as they're each sworn in. We've got them, we've got blue tape on the floor, so I know where to stand. It all, all works out great.
Great.
Yeah, we want to make sure you hit your marks.
I agreed. Me too.
Phil, can you hear me?
We can. Yes, we sure can.
Excellent.
We are already recording and simulcasting out on Facebook.
So how about if I read the prefatory stuff?
Go right ahead.
All right. Pursuant to adopted amendments to the Illinois Open Meetings Act included in Public Act 101-0640, public bodies may, in certain circumstances, hold entirely virtual public meetings without a quorum physically present in any one location. Governor Prisker's executive order 2021-32 has extended this provision to January 8th, 2021. As bill's president, I've made the determination that it is not practical nor prudent to meet in person at this time. Accordingly, this meeting of the village board is being conducted virtually with members of the board and staff participating through Zoom, through the Zoom webinar platform. Village manager Phil Corrali is present in the village hall council chambers in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. It is after 7:00. So item one on the agenda is calling the meeting's order in a roll call. Village manager Corrali, could you do a roll call?
Certainly. Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney. He's connecting to audio. Trustee Mulvaney? Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Here.
Trustee Ruben.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
President Rowan, we have a quorum.
That's great. As noted, today's board meeting is being conducted as a virtual meeting via Zoom webinar software. And is being audio recorded and simulcast on the village's Facebook page. A quorum of members of the board are present via remote access. As required by law, I'll ask for a roll call rather than voice votes on any agenda item requiring a vote. Second item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes. The minutes have been circulated. And are there any comments in the minutes and or suggested changes? And if not, could we have a motion? To approve the regular meeting minutes for November eighteen, twenty twenty one, seven P M.
Phil, move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. In accordance with the supplemental rule, the board approved on April sixteenth, twenty twenty, here's how public comment will be taken at this meeting. The email address and telephone number designated for public comment for this meeting were published with the meeting agenda. At this time, I'd ask that Jordan Riegelski read the public comments received on non-agenda items that were submitted prior to the meeting. Public comments on agenda items, if any, will be read when we reach that item on the agenda. Specifically, any public comments received as a component of tonight's public hearing on the village's tax levy will be read during the public hearing. Jordan, are there any comments on non-agenda items?
President Rowan, yes, we did receive one public comment on non-agenda items. And this public comment is from resident Shayna Martin. Give me one second. And Shayna's comment is as follows. To the Board of Trustees, my name is Shayna Martin, resident of Euclid Avenue in Glencoe. I wanted to respectfully voice my support for allowing egg-laying hens in our town by listing some of the top benefits of keeping backyard chickens. Number one, chickens provide a valuable, low-cost food source, eggs. Number two, chickens provide value as a pet, teaching children about responsibility by caring for an animal other than a typical domestic cat or dog. As a mother to two young daughters, as well as a dog mom to two pups, I am excited by the prospect of giving my kids the hands-on learning experience of raising and caring for an animal that provides food as a means to teach them about the full circle food cycle, as well as kindness towards all animals. Number three, chickens reduce the cost of waste disposal and divert waste from landfills. Up to fifty percent of all household waste is compostable, and chickens are happy to eat much of that waste. This benefit aligns nicely with Glencoe's admirable commitment to sustainability. Number four, chickens provide natural pest control. They love to eat bugs like mosquitoes and ticks, reducing these annoying and potentially harmful pests in our yards. A common objection to chicken ownership in residential settings is fear of noise. However, a hen's laying song is sixty decibels compared to the approximately one hundred and ten decibels of a dog's bark. If the village restricts chicken ownership to hens only, there should be no reason to ban these animals based on noise. Roosters are a different story, and I support the allowance of hens only. Thank you for the consideration of this exciting change to the village rules. I'm hopeful that with some common sense guardrails, our community can benefit from these intelligent and obedient animals. Warmly Shayna Martin. President Rowan, that was the only public comment we received this evening.
Thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Ms. Martin, for a thoughtful submission on something that we are actually thinking about. And Jordan, if we could be sure that Ms. Martin's comments are included in the record when we do look specifically at chickens.
Absolutely.
Okay, if a member of the public would like to submit a public comment during the meeting, please email your comment to glencoe meeting at villageofglencoe.org. Comments submitted during the meeting may be read at the end of the meeting. Written comments should be limited to four hundred words, and a good example of a good comment is what we just heard from Ms. Martin. Okay, that covers item three on the agenda. Item four is reports of committees. And the first item is the committee of the whole. We just had a committee of the whole meeting. And we talked about primarily about two things. First, we had a presentation concerning the possibility of directing of directing a high fence to block golf balls from going and escaping from the driving range. And we're going to continue to look at the feasibility and desirability of that. And the second item we discussed was ways to address never-ending construction projects, and we considered ways in which we could deter never-ending construction projects in order to protect the neighbors that live around them. So that's the committee of the whole meeting. The next item is the finance committee trustee free.
Thank you. We did not have a meeting this month, but we did get a report on village finances, as has been the trend throughout the entire year. After eleven months, village finances looked very good. Revenue is trending nicely above budget with sales tax being really the big, the big upside where the upside is coming from. Lots of activity in town and lots of sales tax revenue. So that's been very good for the village. Permit permit activity has also been very good. All in, it's been, as I've said before, a surprisingly very good year from a financial perspective for the village. Expenses are coming in really very much in line with what we expected at the beginning of the year.
Which is great in light of inflation going up. Thank you for that report. The next item is a report on the plan commission trustee listener.
The plan commission did not meet in December, but we are on the calendar for meeting at the end of January. So I don't have anything new to report from the plan commission.
Thank you. Let me mention one plan committee. Is anyone else getting interference or is it just me? We're all getting it. Do we know what it is?
Something's dinging.
Something's ringing. Maybe an alarm of some sort.
Yeah.
I'm muting anybody besides you, President Rowan.
Okay, no, I so it turns out my phone was ringing. Some some spam from Skype. Okay, apologize. That was me. Before we get off the plan commission, I do want to mention one thing. I consulted with the chair of the plan commission. I consulted with trustee listener about this. It turns out that we have a professional planner on the village board. Trustee Underdunk. And we're about to go into doing the comprehensive plan. And so having consulted, I just wanted to alert everybody that we're going to add as an ex officio member to the plan commission for the purpose of doing the comprehensive plan trustee under dunk. Because it seems, you know, sensible. And I thought if we had a professional planner on the village board and we had him doing things other than planning, we would all get an F. So we're trying not to get an F and Dudley, I want to thank you for agreeing to take this extra task.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the golf advisory committee trustee Hallwax.
Thank you. The golf advisory committee will be this coming Monday, so a report out for what happened in November. The year-to-date rounds through November forty-three thousand seven hundred, and that exceeds last year's rounds by twenty-two hundred. So a fantastic year for the golf course. Here's a pretty impressive number. The revenues exceeded budget by three hundred and twenty-six percent. As many of you may know, we've had a new restaurant provider or new vendor this year, and we the first time in the first year of business reached over the breakpoint, which means we got a payment of just over twenty-two hundred dollars. In terms of friends that Glencoe Golf Course, the current balance is just over a hundred and seventy-five thousand. You may remember, we launched the GoFundMe page right before Thanksgiving and had a little kickoff with the light, the lights. And to raise awareness. So the Friends is going to be going to be featured in the February Compass Magazine, which should be some great, great publicity for us. And the push for the final donations for year end will be sent on the twenty-first. And then one last note, the course is open in December with some of this weird warm weather, which is great. So we've had fifteen thousand dollars of revenue in December. I don't know what I know a little bit about golf courses, as I said, but a lot of golf courses are closed. It's kind of difficult to keep open now. And on that note, Willmet has been closed since October and Northbrook closed at the end of November. So kudos to the staff for being able to keep the golf course open and raise some extra fees in December. That's all I have.
Thank you. And let me, I live on the AT Fairway, and let me just say there are people out yesterday. And it was sixty-five. It was a little windy, but they were out there. Thank you. Okay, next is the sustainability task force trustee Mulvaney.
Yeah, everybody, you know, it occurs to me every month I repeat our little mantra about Glencoe's objectives and sustainability, and I wonder if anybody on board would be willing to do that for me today, just so I know people are listening.
You have to do it yourself.
Do I? Isn't there anybody out there who can repeat what I've been saying now for six years?
It's pretty galactic. That's all I remember.
Well, that's a little disappointing. Glencoe Sustainability Task Force is working hard to make Glencoe the most desirable and sustainable community in the galaxy, right? And we're continuing to do that. Perhaps Phil, if you'd like to give a little update on the leaf blowing, I think we all hopefully all the board members are aware, but for those who are listening, the task force has been very involved in promoting the reduction use of gas-powered blowers and Phil has taken a leadership role across the North Shore. And Phil, do you want to share anything about that?
Sure. Happy to, trustee Mulvaney. Yeah, it is really on the heels of the Sustainability Task Force's presentation that they made at the village board a few months ago. The staff here in Glencoe, as well as members of the S T F, have been reaching out to counterparts in neighboring communities. And last week, a group of eleven municipalities, including us here in Glencoe, met to discuss the subject. And a working group has been developed with representatives from each of those eleven municipalities, as well as subject matter experts from the landscaping industry, Go Green Illinois, and others. The group's going to begin meeting in January with the intent to develop a report that's going to be shared with each municipality that they can utilize to determine how or if they would implement a gasoline leaf blower ban. So along with my counterparts in Willmet and Highland Park, I'm going to be co-chairing this working group. And we plan to to be back to you kind of on a regular basis with some updates and to finish our work later on in twenty twenty-two. So it's it's great to see such a large group of municipalities working together on this subject. Clearly, it is something that a lot of folks are interested in. So thanks, trustee Mulvaney.
For what it's worth, I've been on the board for six years and never gotten a comment from anybody outside of Glencoe about what we discussed until the discussion of stopping gas-powered leaf blowers. Had some positive feedback from people outside of Glencoe.
Nice. Yeah, that's great. And the task force is doing is doing other things as well, of course. What was the focus of our last meeting was our library program and public outreach. It's one of our regular points of discussion, and we have a speaker we've arranged for a speaker on January twelfth from one to two at the library, and this is Don Webbels, who is recently retired University of Illinois professor, Nobel Prize winner, very globally known scientist on climate change. So please pay attention to that. And you know, I don't usually go through every item that we cover as a task force, but there are seven primary initiatives, and I'm just going to list them for you while carbon reduction, green lawns, public awareness, ravines and trees, recycling and waste reduction, sustainable business and water conservation. And we should all know that each one of those initiatives has a few people dedicated to them, and there is progress in each of those areas. Finally, I'll close by saying that the task force is open to any and all volunteers. Anybody interested in joining our group? You do not need to be any kind of official member to participate. You just have to come and be willing to pitch in. They'll be welcome any and all contributions. That's it for me. I'm not present. I will sign out.
Thank you for that presentation, and I and I want to echo what you said about thanking the I mean, the list of what the sustainability task force force is working at is is a list that we should be proud of. And I want to thank you and the members of the task force for what they're doing for our village, including but not limited to the important initiative on leaf blowers. Okay, next item, the Council for Inclusion and Community. Trustee Ruben.
The council met and spent the bulk of the time discussing the upcoming town hall, which please note is February eighth at Writers Theater. It'll be a panel discussion with three panelists focused on what differently abled people face and the issues that they face, and it should be really a good discussion. So I hope you will all either come and show up if if the rules allow that at that time or watch on Zoom. We also talked about future panels and what they might be, because the council does continue to intend to be sponsoring these. And as well talked about the possibility of a speaker series and what that would entail, what the learning objectives would be and what the target audience for those speakers.
Thank you. Okay. That covers the reports of the committees. So now we get to the fifth item on the agenda, which is the report of officers. And the first part of that is the village manager's report, village manager Corrali.
Excuse me.
We've got.
Excuse me. Historic preservation.
Oh, my God. I'm so sorry. You know, I we talked about Dudley, we talked about you and being on the plan commission, and I went too far. Okay. Preservation Commission trustee Underdunk. I apologize.
Thank you very much. I'm wearing a lot of hats these days. On Tuesday, November second, the Historic Preservation Commission discussed several items. First, the commission discussed the current condition of the two Frank Lloyd Wright planters located on Glencoe Sullivan Road Bridge. The village owns the two concrete planters located at either side of the bridge, and both show signs of deterioration. The Public Works Department is currently working with us on soliciting proposals for concrete restoration work, which should total less than ten thousand dollars, and funds have been allocated in the village's calendar year twenty twenty-two budget. The commission also continued refining the historic preservation recommendations in advance of our meeting with the village board in on January twentieth, Committee of the Hall. Now, this is a continuation of our other discussion that we had several months ago. The major major topics to be discussed will be honorary landmarks, demolition requirements, fees, community communication, and historic preservation procedures used in other communities. Finally, we also reviewed for demolition permit applications and did an advisory review on. and did an advisory review on those, and those will be approved. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I apologize. You'd think one of the requirements for being president of the village is you have to be able to read. And it's very clearly listed on the agenda, item G, Historic Preservation Commission. I don't know how I missed it. I apologize. Okay. Five, section five of the agenda, Reports of Officers. Now, the Village Manager's Report.
Thank you very much, President Rowan. The first item under my report is always something that's very exciting for us here in Glencoe. And it's the opportunity to welcome some new individuals into our Public Safety Department and to formally swear them in at the Public Safety Officers. So we're going to do that. Is that one unmuted? Carrie? Okay, we're going to do that this evening. We've got three individuals that we're going to swear in. And I'm going to kick it over to Chief Lewandowski on the other side of the room, who's going to introduce each of them. And then I will swear them in each individually and we'll we'll offer them our welcome when we'll get through those through those pieces. So chief.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Can everybody hear me okay? Mr. President, members of the board, it's my pleasure to introduce and welcome three new public safety officers tonight who are here to take their oath of office. The first officer is David Seaco. David's joined tonight by his wife Veronica and his parents Nancy and Thomas. Welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Back in March, David participated in the Public Safety Commission's examination process for public safety officer. He was placed on the eligibility list and was hired in August. Since being hired, David has attended the Cook County Sheriff's Police Academy. In fact, he graduated today. And he will start our FTO program next week. After graduating high school, David attended Northern Illinois University for two years before joining the US Army. Fulfilling his desire to serve others, he spent four years as a combat medic with deployment to Iraq, Afghanistan, and Haiti before receiving an honorable discharge. Thank you for your service, David. After his military service, David has been successful in his private sector jobs. He served as a store manager, training coordinator, and shipping manager for a local gun distributor and firearms range. He was also a marketing specialist for a law enforcement equipment company. Most recently, David again sought employment in public service and took a position with the Cook County Adult Probation Department before being hired in Glencoe. We've been particularly impressed with David's public service orientation and his strong work ethic. His military service provided him with lessons regarding the resiliency of the human spirit, even in the most desperate circumstances. Throughout his educational and employment history, he has returned to follow his passion of serving others. We believe David will be an excellent addition to the department, and we are confident that he will master all the skills required of him as a public safety officer. David, congratulations and welcome to Glencoe. I appreciate your hard work and dedication thus far, and I wish you a long and rewarding career with the department. And I ask Mr. Crowley to administer the oath.
See us there. That's good. I'm going to talk loud. You should talk as loud as you're comfortable. If you would repeat after me and raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, David Seaco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the Village of Glencoe.
And the ordinances of the Village of Glencoe.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position of public safety officer.
The duties of the position of public safety officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next, I'd like to introduce Joanna Hoffman. Joanna is joined this evening by her parents Sharon and John, her sister Jillian and Jamie, and her brother-in-law Gerardo. Welcome and thank you for being here for being here tonight. Also in March, Joanna participated in our examination process and was she was hired in October. Since being hired, she attended the NIFSA Fire Academy and graduated just last week. She's now doing some on-the-job fire training in Glencoe for a few weeks before starting the police academy at the College of U. Page in early January. During the pre-employment testing process, we were struck by Joanna's communication skills, maturity, and hard work ethic. She was a standout volleyball player in high school and earned a scholarship to play in college. While in college, Joanna decided that police work would be a good career fit for her. Since college, she has stayed active in the volleyball world, having coached club and high school teams in addition to working regular full-time employment. Her most recent employment was with the Cook County Social Services Department, where she coordinated the intake of probationers and connected them with caseworkers. In that job, she learned the value of communicating in a calm and professional manner, often with angry and confrontational people. Incidentally, this is a very very valuable attribute for being a public safety officer. We believe Joanna will be an excellent addition to the department and we look forward to preparing her for success in all aspects of public safety. Joanna, congratulations and welcome to Glencoe. I appreciate your hard work in the fire academy and now the police academy. And I wish you a long and successful career as a Glencoe Public Safety Officer. Mr. Crowley will now administer the oath.
If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joanna Hoffman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the Village of Glencoe.
And the ordinances of the Village of Glencoe.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position of public safety officer.
The duties of the position of the public safety officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome.
Hey, next, I'd like to introduce John Marino. You may recognize John's last name. John's brother Filippo was sworn in four years ago. John's joined tonight by his wife Angela and his daughter Annabella, his parents Anna and John, his brothers Phil and Michael, and his sister Gianna, and his in-laws Vincenza and Pasquale. Welcome and thank you for being here tonight to support John. In March, John also participated in our process and he was hired on December sixth. John is well-prepared for this job. He's a certified law enforcement officer with six years' experience with the Yonkhurst Police Department, where he was a member of the NIPIS Mobile Field Force and received training as a special, released specialized training as a defensive tactics instructor. The training and experience will accelerate his training progression to become a fully cross-trained public safety officer. He'll go through an abbreviated police field training program prior to being released to solo patrol likely in a few weeks. John earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Lewis University in two thousand and nineteen while working as a full-time police officer. During the pre-employment testing process, we were struck by John's sincere public service orientation and work ethic in preparation for this career. He possesses a high degree of motivation and self-discipline, all of which will serve him well as a public safety officer. We believe John will be an excellent addition to the department, and we expect him to be a proactive officer and a fine representative of our department. John, congratulations and welcome to Glencoe Public Safety. I appreciate you starting a new chapter of your law enforcement career with us, where you will add fire and emergency medical services to your extensive skill set. Mr. Crowley will now administer the oath.
All right, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Marino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the Village of Glencoe.
The ordinances of the Village of Glencoe.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position of public safety officer.
Duties of the position of public safety officer.
According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations. You're welcome. Thank you.
Phil, can I interrupt for a second? Let me just say in general, I've been satisfied that our virtual meeting
Before our room clears out, that we don't have any, first of all, any echo going on. I think we've managed to fix our
I just want to congratulate. So I just want to congratulate.
Our three new officers, you are joining a team that is unique, a team that is particularly, I think skilled in ways that none of our counterpart departments are. And I'm glad to see so many of your counterparts here tonight to support you as you're sworn in and you begin your career with us here in Glencoe. Thank you very much. And thank you to your families for being here tonight and for supporting your career ambitions and for supporting you as you begin to work on behalf of our of our community, of our residents, of our organization. Welcome to all of you. Thank you for being here, and we look forward to a lot of success ahead.
Phil, could I? I just want to echo that. I'm I'm sorry we can't be meeting in person. I want to welcome our new public safety officers who sound terrific. In Glencoe, the public safety officer is your friend, and these sound like perfect people. They should be. We're proud to have you with us. Your family should be proud that you're here. And we look forward to working with you every day. Okay, thank you, Phil.
I have a couple of other items I wanted to mention, but I'm going to let this group clear out of the room if
Okay.
Unless they really want to continue through the machinations of government.
Leaf blowers. They want to stay about leaf blowers.
So I just had a couple of other items I wanted to briefly touch on with the board tonight. Thanks to trustee Mulvaney, I I covered one of those items earlier during the Sustainability Task Force report. Just again, two, three quick things. I'm really happy to report that the emergency repair of the sixteen-inch water main that traverses the Skokie Lagoons and connects Glencoe's water tower west of the Edens to the rest of our water system was completed this week. And today, the main was put back into service. This is not a simple project. It was done at breakneck speed and really great work by our Public Works team and our contractors. Especially want to thank Don Kirk and Alex Urbansik and Frank Coletti for their work. And of course, Dave Mau for his leadership in getting this project done so quickly. It didn't hurt that Mother Nature cooperated and gave us some warm days in December to hit this project and get it done. We've been mentioning over the last few months how great our downtown business district is doing and all of the just the buzz and the bustle and hustle in our all of our commercial districts. As always, as we are in the midst of the holiday shopping season, we want to encourage everyone to shop and dine locally. And especially if you're enjoying one of the cultural opportunities that are happening in Glencoe, like Lightscape at the Botanic Garden, which we we learned recently welcomes about two hundred and twenty-five thousand people into the Botanic Garden every year. Or if you're taking in a show at Writers Theater. If you haven't heard, Writers Theater is reopening for live audiences with a whole series of COVID protocols in place. But they are welcoming guests back for live performances. And opening night of Dishwasher Dreams, which is the the show that is playing right now, is tomorrow night. So we're looking forward to seeing live theater happening again in our downtown. Hasn't happened since mid-March of two thousand and twenty. And we're really thrilled to see audiences back at at Writers Theater. Last but not least, I just wanted to mention the fact that we have the a few federal holidays coming up, Christmas and New Year's Day, both of which fall on a Saturday this year. And because of that, the holiday observances take place on Friday, the twenty-fourth and thirty-first of December. Village Hall offices are closed both of those days and will reopen on Monday, December twenty-seventh and Monday, January third. If you have garbage collection on Friday, that will not change despite the holiday observances. So put your garbage out on Friday as normal, both of those weeks, as as garbage collection will not be impacted. And just last but not least, on behalf of the entire staff, I wanted to wish the board and the community a very happy and healthy new year. And we look forward to working on a lot of great things together in two thousand and twenty-two. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item reported officers is the Village President's report, and I have three things. The first one is that in January and February, we we plan on I hope we'll be able to recommend appointments to fill vacancies on the zoning board and the Council for Inclusion and and Community. And the plan is to conduct interviews in January after, you know, after the first of the year. We have some applications already, but I want to note for the public that if anyone is interested in volunteering to serve on either the zoning board or the Council for Inclusion and Community, please contact Village Hall, get an application. And then we'll we'll interview you. The goal, like I said, is to fill these vacancies in January or February. Second thing I'd like to do is is on behalf of the board and me, I want to thank the staff for all the work they've done in a very challenging year. Despite the pandemic, the village has soldiered on. We've had a good year. And the reason for that, in part, is because of the superb work on behalf of our residents and our businesses that the village staff has done each and every day. And so and I want to I want to call out the the employees that work closely with us, but because I mentioned them, I don't want to leave out the folks that are actually doing all the hard work. So in Public Safety Department, Chief Lewandowski and Deputy Chief Mary Saken, but the whole department. We are lucky to have them. Finance Director Nikki Larson and the Finance Department. We have a great finance department, and we keep track of a lot of money. And we handle it well. And the Public Works Department Director Dave Mau, Don Kirk, Alex Urbansik, and Taylor Baxter and the entire staff at the golf club, Stella Nanos and her superb team have made the golf club the best public course in the state. And then in the Village Manager's Office, in addition to Phil, we have Assistant Village Manager Sharon Tanner, our our technical wizard, Rob Desard, and Jordan Riegalski, who keeps us in line every day. Thank you for all that you do. To the extent any of us on the Village Board look good, it's because of you. So thank you. At last, I want to wish everybody on the village, in the village, a happy and healthy new year. So that's the president's comments. Let me go to the sixth item. Now we're getting to real business. Although I note that we have talked, we've talked about this many times in public meetings. So if this goes quickly, as it might, that's not because we haven't thought about it or talked about it. It's only because we've talked about it, thought about it, have meetings a lot. So the next item is the public hearing. In consideration of an ordinance making appropriations for corporate purposes for the Village of Glencoe for calendar year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-two and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. What I'd like to do is open the public hearing and I ask our superb Finance Director Nikki Larson to present.
Thank you, President Rowan. Okay, included in the agenda packet this evening are a number of items that are related to the two thousand and twenty-two annual budget process. These are all detailed out in the consent agenda. And as President Rowan indicated, this has been a long road to get all of these items on the agenda this evening. So we'll talk about the timeline in just a moment. The first item is item six, the Appropriations Ordinance for Calendar Year two thousand and twenty-two. This ordinance sets forth the legal maximum spending limit for the village. This slide shows the breakdown by fund of the budget and the appropriations. And essentially, the appropriations are set at one hundred and ten percent of the budget amount. A hundred and ten percent of the budget amount. That doesn't mean that we would spend that. Does give us a little bit of leeway, but in the event that staff feels that we are going to exceed. A budgeted line item, that would be something that would come back to the board, so this is really just kind of a a second. Insurance to ensure that we are staying within our legal limits. This does require a public notice, which was published in the Sun Times on the twenty fourth. Actually, I think that was the Tribune, but it was published on the twenty fourth. And this is based off of the budget, which is item number D on the consent agenda. This is set at a more detailed line item level for those watching at home and are interested in looking at the entire budget. It is available on the village's transparency portal, and there's also a link to it in the agenda packet. As we mentioned earlier, this has been a long road. We started with this process back in May when we started looking at financial policies. And picked back up in September with the financial forecast. A community investment plan review in October and a full detailed draft budget review in the month of November. On a total level, we're looking at twenty nine or twenty eight point nine million dollars in revenue and thirty six point five in expenditures. That's excluding the statutorily controlled pension funds. It does look like there's quite a bit more of expenditures than revenue. On a total level, and that is because the village is using a number of reserves. Those are aggregated resources that have been set aside for this purpose, with the lion's share of those reserves being bond proceeds. That were issued for the purpose of spending on capital. And really, the story of this year's budget is the community investment plan. As the community may recall, we did, the village should go out for referendum in April of last year. With a large or April of this year, just seems like a long time. With a large request for ten million dollars in capital improvement, so we are kicking that off with the 2022 budget. And have also been fortunate to be able to supplement those dollars with a number of grant funding. Most lo- most notably, the American Recovery Plan Act funding of one point two million. And the Rebuild Illinois funding of five hundred and seventy four thousand, so those resources will all supplement those. Bond proceeds and cash reserves that we've aggregated for this purpose, and we will continue to seek grant funding. With the passage of the recent infrastructure bill. Continuing with the budget ordinance, the summary shows the surplus and deficit by fund, we do have a balanced budget. Despite the negatives there, because we are planning to use those reserves for one time. If everything goes as planned, in 2022, we would end the year with an ending fund balance of just shy of five months of operating expenses in the general fund. And just shy of four in the water fund, and this is in line with our multi-year projections. As we forecast five years out. Okay, the next item that's part of the budget process is item E, which is consideration of the proposed property tax levy. This is for tax levy year 2021, which is for collections in 2022. The Illinois Department of Revenue allows the village to increase this levy about one point four percent this year. Plus any new growth that happens in the village, so. With excluding debt service, we are requesting an increase of two point two percent. That includes our estimate of new growth in the village. But that will be automatically reduced by the county once all of the numbers are finalized. In total, with the library and debt service, what's going to be levied by the county? In twenty 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 one technically and collected in twenty twenty two is sixteen million seventy thousand nine hundred and thirty seven dollars. And again, additional detail on that is included in the packet. The next item is item number G, the Fee and Fines Schedule Resolution. This is indeed part of the budget process again. By way of practice, the village reviews our fee and fine schedule every year to ensure that we are charging appropriate rates to cover the costs of our services. The most notable increases here, again, are water rates. This is in line with our water rate study, but we have adjusted the rate increase down from what was previously recommended. Just adjusting for additional revenue that's been received and some delays and changes in our water distribution upgrade plan. There's also a three percent increase in sanitary sewer rates, this is to cover the village's cost of having to line all of the sewers in the village. That's a mandate that's coming down to us from the Illinois EPA and and MWRD, our reclamation district. And then in future review for 2022, we'll also be taking a look at business license licenses and management fees. We're almost there. Next item is item H, the multi-year contracts resolution. This is also something that we do annually, these are contracts that have been approved by the board in a prior year. But it's an ongoing contract, so just for transparency purposes, we do bring these back once a year. To ensure that we are in line with our purchasing policy and also to make everyone aware that we are renewing these contracts, and it is part of the 2022 budget. Okay, last item is the supplemental appropriations and budget amendment, this is actually for calendar year twenty one, we do do this as part of the whole budget process. As much as we try to plan ahead, there are obviously things that can happen throughout the year. That will increase the village's expenses, and we do have to essentially do some house cleaning at the end of the year to make sure that. Our budget matches what what actually happened, so we are amending both of our appropriations ordinance and the budget amendment. For 2021, fortunately, there are resources included in additional revenues that were received. As trustee Avery noted earlier, the village has had a very positive year, and many of our revenues were received in excess of budget. So that additional revenue will cover a lot of these additional expenses that popped up. The one exception that we had was in our police pension fund. That expenditures related to additional service credits that were passed. Service credit transfers that was legislation passed by the state legislature. And we are required to comply with, so there we're anticipating a little bit of expense there. And that concludes the entire package, so at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for an excellent, clear presentation, and as I noted before. The village board has been working with staff in the finance department on this for a long time, so are there any questions? But if there aren't, that's because we've already asked them. Okay, so this is the public hearing for consideration of the appropriations ordinance. And now's the time for public comment. Jordan, have we received any public comments?
President Rowan, we did not receive any about the public hearing.
Okay. So we've gotten to the point now where I think we should have a motion to.
President Rowan.
Public hearing, oh, yeah.
I just for, just to make the record clear, since we do have manager Corrali present at the village hall, just confirm that there is no one. Present at the village hall that desires to be heard during the public hearing.
There, thank you, thank you, Steve, there are, there is no one present physically here in the village hall that wanted to make a comment either.
Thank you.
That's why we have our lawyers looking out for us, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Village Manager Corrali, could we do a roll call?
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney. Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Avery.
Yes.
Motion carries, okay, hearing is closed, is there a motion to, if there aren't any other comments, and of course, if there are. Now's the time, but if there aren't any other comments from the board, is there a motion to approve the approach appropriations ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Avery.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you, everybody. Okay, item seven on our agenda is the consent agenda. And because this is a virtual meeting, I'll ask the village manager to read the titles. Of the lengthy list of items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Rowan, and I will be speaking for a while, I will attempt to get through this as quickly as I can. The first item on the consent agenda is the November twenty twenty one Village Treasures Report and Golf Financial Report. The November twenty twenty one Check Register for the Village of Glencoe and Glencoe Golf Club. Ratification of the November twenty twenty one Early Check Register List. Consideration of an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the Village of Glencoe for all corporate purposes for the calendar year. Commencing January one, twenty twenty two and ending December thirty one, twenty twenty two. Consideration of an ordinance for the levy of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January one, twenty twenty one. And ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one for the Village of Glencoe, Cook County, Illinois, and those dates are correct, even though. They may sound wrong, because we levy for the prior year in the future year. Consideration of an ordinance levying taxes for the Washington Place Special Service Area for tax year 2021. Consideration of a resolution amending the comprehensive fee and fine schedule for calendar year 2022. Consideration of a resolution approving and authorizing calendar year 2022 expenditures for multi-year contracts. Consideration of a supplemental appropriation ordinance and corresponding budget amendment for calendar year beginning January one, twenty twenty one and ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one. Consideration of an enabling resolution authorizing the village manager to approve additional costs. For a previously approved purchase contract for skid steer, track loader, snow blower attachments. Consideration of an enabling or resolution authorizing the village manager to retain current truck number forty one in the vehicle fleet. And approve an additional fifteen thousand dollars to complete the purchase of a new six-wheel dump truck from JX Truck Center of Wadsworth, Illinois. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract for the purchase of of a skid steer track loader. From Atlas Bobcat of Elk Grove Village, Illinois, for a not to exceed cost of fifty seven thousand three hundred and twenty nine dollars. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract for the purchase of one leaf vacuum trailer unit. From Standard Equipment of Elmhurst, Illinois, for a cost not to exceed eighty seven thousand twenty seven dollars. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract for the purchase of one Chevrolet Bolt EV. From National Auto Fleet Group of Watsonville, California, for a not to exceed cost of thirty one thousand eight hundred thirty six dollars. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a new three-year professional services agreement. With HR Green Incorporated of McHenry, Illinois, for building plan, review and inspection services. Consideration of a resolution waiving the competitive bidding requirements and authorizing a contract extension with Multi-System Management Company Incorporated. Of Chicago, Illinois, for janitorial services for the village hall and public work service building for a total cost not to exceed forty nine thousand one hundred and seventy six dollars. Consideration of the twenty twenty two Village Board Committee and Commission Meetings Calendar. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the village to participate in the national opioid settlements. Consideration of a resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement with North Shore area municipalities. For sharing personnel and equipment to respond to snow emergencies during the COVID nineteen emergency. And that concludes the lengthy consent agenda.
Thank you, I you may be entitled to some kind of combat pay for reading that. So all of these items are included in the public record for this meetings. Several of them have been the subject of discussion at prior public meetings. If there aren't any other comments from the board, and if there are, they're welcome now. But if there aren't, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I just. Hello. Hello.
We got here, we can hear.
Dudley talking, I just want to thank our finance staff for putting together a terrific budget. You know, I've had over forty years' experience in local government, and this is one of the best packages I've seen, so thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Underdunk.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or is there a motion?
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Village Manager Corrali, can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly, trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Avery.
Yes.
The motion carries and the consent agenda is approved. The next item, item eight on our agenda is regular business. And item listed there is a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance granting a cable vision franchise. To Comcast of California slash Illinois LLs. And so what I'd like to do now is open the public hearing. And ask assistant to the village manager, Jordan Riegalski, to present, Jordan.
Thank you, good evening again, President Rowan and Board of Trustees. Before I get into my brief presentation this evening, I wanted to let the board know that we are joined this evening by Frank Dwell. Comcast Senior Manager of Government Affairs, so welcome, Frank, we are, we are delighted to have you here this evening. So as described in tonight's agenda packet, the village has maintained a franchise agreement for cable television services in our community since the late nineteen eighties. So a cable franchise agreement allows a cable television company to operate and maintain their local cable system within the village. As context, the village board authorized the current Comcast Comcast franchise agreement in December twenty sixteen. And will expire at the end of this month on December thirty first. So to make sure that everybody in Glencoe had the opportunity to to learn about this and make their public comments, night we're having a public hearing. We did have a notice in the the December ninth edition of our local newspaper, the Glencoe News. And for folks that subscribe to our e-newsletter, it was in our Friday, December tenth edition. Also, for those listening at home, I want to note that the cable franchise agreement does not address. Individual customer subscriptions or com- or subscriptions, our contracts with Comcast or broadband internet service. So we recommend that if you have any concerns or feedback about your Comcast account to to contact Comcast directly, that's not what this is for this evening. So going back to the the current agreement, prior to the expiration at the end of this month, village staff and Frank also helped us as well. We reviewed the terms and conditions of the proposed renewed franchise agreement. And the differences between the expiring agreement and proposed agreement are minimal, but there are a few, and I'll just make note of those quickly. This new proposed franchise agreement has a change to reflect Comcast's new taxing structure. It also includes updated language to reflect a decision made by the Federal Communications Commission or the FCC. Back in August twenty nineteen called the Third Order, which rules that nearly all non-cash. Or in-kind assessments by franchise providers constitute franchise freeze up to a five percent cap. And then as well as updated language to reflect new emergency alert system regulations. So staff reviewed this with our legal team, and following any comments that are made by Frank or any of the board, we do recommend that the board. Consider and approve this proposed renewal agreement. So at this time, I welcome Frank, if he has any additional comments or any questions or comments from the board.
I don't really have a presentation, folks, I would just say that to echo Jordan's comments, this, I believe, is our fourth franchise with the village. And this particular franchise is essentially the very same one that we have in place today. With just some slight updates to reflect some of the changes in the regulation over the last five years. We appreciate. Uh, we appreciate our partnership with the village for all these many years, and we look forward to many years of continued.
Thank you. Um, uh, Jordan, are there, have we gotten any public comments, uh, for this hearing?
Let me refresh to see if we got any. Well, you, no, we did not receive any.
And village manager Corrali, is there anybody in the room that looks like they're chomping at the bit to talk about Comcast?
There are not, President Rowan.
Okay, okay. Um, so, uh, thanks. That's the, the public hearing. Are there any comments board members, uh, want to make as we consider the Comcast franchise?
I'd like to add something.
Please, trusty underdog, please do.
This is, this is Dudley Underdunk. Um, I'd like to, um, encourage Comcast to redouble their efforts efforts on resiliency in the program. Uh, we have experienced, uh, some slowdowns, some slow response, some service reductions, uh, in the past few months. And, um, I'd just like to make sure that they're looking into those issues. Uh, also, um, their customer service, uh, over the phone can be a bit perplexing. And anything you could do to simplify that would be most appreciated. Um, otherwise, the speeds are terrific, and, um, I'm glad we have Comcast. But, uh, the resiliency, I think, could be improved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other, uh, board members want to say anything? I, I, and I, there's, I'm gonna want to take about a minute, but anybody else before me? Okay, um, I think all of us on the board and most everybody in Glencoe is probably a customer of Comcast. So you're a very important part, uh, of the village. Uh, I've been involved with this since the very first cable TV franchise in Glencoe, which Steve Elrod and I negotiated um, probably in nineteen, I'm gonna guess something like nineteen eighty-seven or eighty-eight.
I think eighty-seven.
Um, and, uh, it was a different company. Uh, we interviewed a whole bunch of companies. Uh, we picked one. They, that company was immediately bought out by somebody else that we hadn't picked. Um, and, uh, you know, I think eventually Comcast acquired the kit and caboodle. So here we are. Um, Comcast, you, like I said, you are a very important part of the village. Um, Comcast has also been for the last five months my pen pal, because I was having issues. Uh, and it took a long time to get the issues resolved. They're still in the process of being resolved. Um, and, you know, as, as you would expect, that was frustrating. I appreciate um, the good faith that Comcast has shown in trying to weather through it. I've had my gripes here and there. Uh, and I guess I, the only thing I want to say is, um, because you're so important, I hope, uh, you know, per, uh, I feel lately like Comcast is paying attention and, and doing their best. And I just, uh, want to urge you to make sure that all Glencoe residents get, um, uh, the attention so we can get things fixed quickly. Um, and with, but I, you know, so I'm, I'm grateful for uh, how the company has responded, but it's taken a while. One thing I, I do note, every time somebody from Comcast comes out, whoever it is says, oh, they blew it last time. Who were those clowns? And then they, hey, propose something else. Um, but, um, anyway. Thank you, uh, for being there. And like I said, I hope that as it goes forward, everybody in the village gets, uh, excellent service. So, um, if there's nobody else that wants to say anything, um, uh, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Uh, on, uh, the Comcast franchise?
So moved.
Yeah. Okay, I think we got, uh, two, we'll count that as a second. Uh, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trusty Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. The hearing is closed. Okay, then we get to the meat of this. Is there, uh, unless there's discussion, is there a motion to approve the ordinance with the Comcast franchise?
So move.
Second. Is there a second? I can't.
A second.
Okay, uh, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trusty Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. The franchise is awarded. Uh, Mr. Duel, thank you for being a good sport and coming here. Um, and, uh, you know, we look forward, uh, to years of excellent service from Comcast and the Village Glencoe.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, uh, item nine, other business. Is there any other business any member of the board would like to discuss? I don't hear anything, and I note that we had a, a very eloquent comment on chickens. So we've already covered that. Jordan, do we have any public comments, um, during the meeting?
No, we did not receive any, President Rowan.
Okay. Um, we've already had our closed session. So if there isn't anything else, um, uh, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. And let me just say to everybody, thank you. Uh, thank you to the staff and the village board um, for the really hard work throughout the year, and I hope everybody has a great holiday. But with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. So a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trusty Vrie.
Yes.
Thank, uh, the motion is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Uh, it's been a good year. Let's keep it up next year.
Have a happy and a healthy one, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.